If you like pies, it's coming to Park City. It'll be located down where Jerry's old barber shop used to be. And they should be up and running with probably within the next three weeks. Been working with Lou for six months or so. And I think we've got a sealed deal on a 100,000 square foot facility with 50 employees up at 85th Street. We probably own some land up there. It's going to require rezoning because some of that's commercial and this is an industrial application. So I'm not privy to release names or anything, but it's coming, it's coming pretty quick. They're going to have to replat it and rezone it in order to work this particular deal. And that's all my reports. So if anybody's got any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Melman?
You said the completion of 53rd Street there, I see a lot of socks over the drains. Is that normal or?
Yeah, that'll stay there until the grass gets up to a level that they feel comfortable that the mud don't slide into the.
Okay, thank you.
Into the outlets.
Okay.
The only problem with those socks is they back up water.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks Melman. Tom?
And I asked a couple of council meetings ago, and I noticed there were some people down there the day after looking at where there had been a barrier along the west side of Primrose to keep you from going down in that ditch. It was removed and never put back. There's no intentions of putting that back?
We're working on pricing that out ourselves. It wasn't part of the 53rd Street project to be removed.
Well, they removed it.
Well, yeah, they, well, we don't know that, we didn't remove it.
Okay.
It wasn't part of the project to be removed.
Okay.
I think somebody got over anxious and removed it and said, oops.
Well, that's dark there, and there have been a couple of cars that have gone down in that ditch.
Right.
Over the past few years, so.
Well, we're working on it, Rick, and his crew's working on trying to figure out how to do that. That's kind of a touchy deal because of the flume and everything.
Okay.
And so they're working on trying to get some of that priced out and what it's going to take to do that.
Okay.
So we haven't, we haven't forgotten that. I have one more thing to let the council know. I've emailed you on this, but I promised I would also tell you about it. The Chambers is having a mixer Thursday evening, 4:30 to 6:30 down at the Best Western, and the council members, the mayor are invited, and staff are invited to attend if you'd like.
It's more than our city?
Yes, it's more than just our cities. Bella, Chambers, people are going to be there, Valley Center stuff, so.
Does anybody else have any questions for Jack? Not seeing any, thank you, Jack. Next, we're going to hear from our senior center director, Madison Schreiner. Madison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update on the senior center and everything that's going on there. As of October 31st, the senior center has had 627 active members, so over 600 seniors that have gone through the senior center since the start of the year. So that number is actually down a little bit from last year, unfortunately, but I kind of did some calculations because I thought that the senior center has remained busy this year, so that number didn't really seem logical to me. And it turns out that our duplicated attendance is up. So even though we haven't had as many people come and visit the senior center one time, those that have visited the senior center have done it more times, if that makes any sense throughout the year. And so I am happy with that number. We have completed 28 baseline irregular occurring activities, 60 educational, and 19 special events so far this year, and that exceeds the county's expectations for us as a senior center level two for the year. Just a brief update on what's been going on, some of our programs. And we did recently have a trip to Dexter, Kansas. That was quite an adventure, lots of fun. And we also had a flu shot clinic that brought out several seniors in the city to come and get their flu shot. Medicare open enrollment is going on at the moment until December 7th. And I, as a Schick volunteer, I take, I give consults on Medicare Part D options, that's your prescription drug coverage. Each open enrollment, Medicare beneficiaries can take a look and see if their prescription drug coverage can be better for next year, more affordable, and I'm able to help them navigate that. So I am taking appointments, just give me a call. And upcoming, the holidays are always a busy, busy time for the senior center, so we have lots of outings and different programs going on, such as we're going to the Orphan to see Straight No Chaser at the end of this month. We're going to see Ballet Wichita's Nutcracker on December 13th. And we're having our annual Holiday Lights Tour on December 19th. So that should be a lot of fun. Actually, the end of this week, we're having the floors stripped and waxed, so it's going to be nice and pretty after this week. And thanks in advance to Rick and his guys for helping me move the furniture because I can't do it all by myself. And we're always looking for volunteer drivers for our Meals on Wheels program and also our volunteer transportation program. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions for Madison? Tom?
I just have one comment, and I don't think that, and I've probably been guilty of it this year too, if you go to the senior center and you haven't been there before, you just sign the guestbook because that's where she gets her account, and I haven't done it this year, and I've been in there a couple of times.
You are awesome, Tom. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, every time you come into the senior center, if you're 55 or over, talk to me about signing up on a membership form. It's free, but the county does like to know how many people are coming to see the senior center and utilize it, so that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Not seeing any more questions, as always, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And John?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes eight zero. The next item on the agenda under new business, item A, is consider the approval of a plat on land located on the southeast corner of 69th Street North and hydraulic for the High Ridge III Edition. Jack?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to get to it. This thing is, I think I finally found it. Okay, a few months ago, you changed the zoning at the corner of Hydraulic 69th Street to multifamily units. They're going to put in duplexes. If you look on your screen, if it comes up, this is the plat itself. They've taken the area there and have subdivided it into, I believe, 30 lots for 30 duplexes. And it's went through the planning commission and meets their criteria, and they do recommend that you approve the final plat.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this? Tom?
I've got one, and trying to look at this, that's on the north end of the pond?
Some of it's on the north and some's a little bit on the west.
But the pond's kind of into the little.
In that L.
Yeah, it kind of makes a little escher there, the pond does, yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions? Jim?
Well, I would move that we approve the plat on the land located on the southeast corner of 69th Street North and hydraulic for High Ridge III Edition.
Okay, Gary?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes eight zero. The next item on the agenda is item B, which is consider the approval of the developer agreements, agreement for High Ridge III, third edition. Jack?
This is a fairly standard agreement. It's real similar to the agreement we approved on the overall subdivision of High Ridge. I think Doug has reviewed it. I don't know if Doug has any comments about it, but Doug has taken a look at it.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, or Doug, did you want to add anything?
No, it's real similar to what we did before, standard agreement.
Okay.
I make a motion we approve the developer's agreement for High Ridge III Edition.
Okay, Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes eight zero. The next item on the agenda, which is item C, which is consider the approval of a respread agreement for the existing specials, stormwater, High Ridge II Edition lots 1 through 3 block A. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item and the next, I don't have to repeat the stuff, so I'll cover both kind of in Originally, there was some specials spread to these lots, the original platted lots, not the 30 that you see. Typically, in the past, Central County, when they would have a plat that would replat an area, they would just automatically take the square footage of the area to be assessed. And let's say if it's one big lot, for example, and it was $100,000, say, and then you platted it into 10 lots, well, then each lot would have 1/10 of the 100,000 or 10,000 per lot. For whatever reason, the gal that normally does this for the county, I don't know if she had a situation where she had messed something up or whatever, but she's real nervous about doing these. So now she wants us to approve this, and then sign this agreement, and then send it on to the county, then they would respread it. And all this will do is take the existing specials, instead of it being one big lump, it'll take it and divide it into each individual lots. So it'd be proportional per lot. Let's say there's 20 lots, then each lot would get 1/20 of the overall piece of the pie, so to speak. So that's what this respread agreement does, it just says to the county, we're fine with it, go ahead and respread these. It doesn't impact the payment schedule or anything like that.
And Tom?
I understand what Jack said, and I'm going to make a motion we approve this agreement, respread agreement.
Okay, for the storm monitoring?
For storm, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item D, which is consider the approval of a respread agreement for the existing specials, street paving for High Ridge II Edition lots 1 through 3 block A. Tom?
It's consistent with the last one. I make a motion we approve the respread of the street paving.
And Jim?
And I would second that also.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item E, which is consider the approval of the replat of the land located west of I-135, north of 69th Street North for air capital delivery and warehouse addition. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your screen, you'll see the actual plat. The top of the screen, the top property line, that abuts the Hayes Company to give you an orientation. I-135 is on the right. Also, let me see if I can spread it up here, Lot 3, Block A is that big building that's being under construction. Most of that area is that particular lot. Lot, let me get it up here, it'll come into focus. I believe that's Lot 2 up there. That's where he built that 350,000 square foot building initially. Like I say, this was originally, portion of this was originally platted as Murdoch Properties Edition. He's come back in and added some land and bought some additional land, and he, I was able to talk him into going ahead and replating it all, so we kind of have a plan as to what he's hoping to do. As far as the water and sewer, the sewer is going to be septic tanks. These are big warehouses, they don't have a lot of need for restrooms, you know, they may have four or five employees that would use the restroom there, and so they're, right now anyway, their septic system. In order to bring sewer, they'd have to cross I-135, which is going to be a very expensive venture to get it across, and he may have to do that as he develops southern portion of this particular property. Reserve A is a huge pond that's going to take on all the stormwater that's coming off of this building and other buildings in the area. Water's already there to that 350,000 square foot, and it would be extended over, and eventually come down to 69th. The road there, which is called Air Cap Drive, if you plotted Air Cap Drive here and took it north, it pretty much matches this, and so he wanted to use Air Cap Capital Drive. My understanding that he's going to pay for this road, it's going to be about $130,000, $140,000, he doesn't, his intention is not to do specials, and so I gave him a big hug and said, we really appreciate him taking that on and spreading it. And so that's his intention. As this develops, there may be sometime in the future where 69th Street may have to be widened in the future to handle, if the traffic just gets going real, real intense, we may have to widen it in order to handle the traffic. But right now, it doesn't seem that traffic's going to be that severe that it's going to result in them having to pay to widen the road. And I'll take any questions anybody might have. The planning commission looked at it to meet all their criteria, and they recommend approval of the final plat.
Melvin?
Who's going to be responsible for widening that road on 69th?
Well, it'll be him and other owners along that road.
He's going to take it all the way to?
Broadway.
Broadway?
Yeah.
Is there a traffic concern there, getting out on that, or?
Well, it just depends on the traffic. Right now, you know, if your crystal ball's better than mine.
Well, I mean, they kind of pop over that hill there, trying to pull out there. That'd be a concern or not, you know, over the bridge?
I'd say a lot of them are going to probably go north because they have a free right turn, another right turn in that Lake State, which if you go south.
Are you concerned about Broadway, or are you?
Coming down on 69th Street there.
That way's.
They stay in their lane, there shouldn't be a problem. And, you know, if something has to be done in the road, the road would be widened and taken in all other safety considerations.
Okay.
We would require that if that road is ever widened.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, I think. Were you talking about the bridge over 135?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Coming from the east, you know, coming down the hill there.
Yeah, most likely they would be going west or northeast off of there because that would be the quickest way to get back up to 77th, I would think.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
George?
Jack, 69th Street, it hadn't been that long ago, that was a gravel road. Does that have much of a base under it?
No more base in any other county road, George. County's the one that paved it many years ago. It's just like any other county road, same thing.
I was just wondering what truck traffic's going to do to it.
Well, you know, if it gets too intense, they're going to have to widen the road, enough that it really starts tearing the road up. You know, 61st Street, west of, west of Broadway, has had, oh, some, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 trucks a day on it, and it's still holding up, it's starting to see it. So, you know, we're just going to have to watch it. I think on the interim here, there's probably not enough to be concerned. They may have four or five trucks come in there a day for this big warehouse, my understanding. But when they start bringing in hundreds of trucks and stuff, that's when they're going to have to start looking at widening that road. Okay, thank you.
Okay, John?
Well, I might also, right there, that little block out there at the, down at the bottom, and I'll work it here. This right here, that's where the Keachai Township currently is, and they have all kinds of heavy equipment going in there of their own. But here again, it's not a big load on the road. In fact, I wouldn't be a bit surprised, Keachai Township's the one that did the road.
Good. Okay, John?
Yeah, you just circled there where that's at. Can you circle where they're going to be pulling out onto 69th, or show us where?
Sure. It's going to be right, come on. Right there.
I just wonder, this is the new road he's putting in right here. And I wonder at some point, I know this is probably the time for the discussion, but maybe just to get out ahead of it, if you remember back where Lou's warehouses are over on Prospect, we've gone, we decided to go back in and do concrete, kind of in that little area where they turn. I just wonder at some point if this will be a good candidate for that as well.
These are going to build, this is going to be a concrete road.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
But does it come out, I mean, 69th is blacktop, and that's where they make, I mean, I know they pull straight ahead on concrete, but when they turn is where it digs in on their steering axles.
Yeah.
Anyway, just something to think of. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if that's not county, I'm going on that road there. It goes city, county, you know, it's, yeah, that might be county, I don't know.
Peace mailing together. Tom?
Well, I was just going to make one comment. I think that this road is not necessarily for truck traffic to move in and out on a regular basis, but it's a safety issue with fire department and others having a secondary way into those buildings up there. So, but I'm sure the trucks are going to use it when they find out about it, but initially, it's for public safety and not traffic, so.
Yeah, the upper part of that, there is going to be access from Hayes Company to provide additional access to this property from the north. So they have two means of access, the fire department does.
Anyone else have any questions? Does anybody have a recommendation? I heard two clicks. Tom?
I make a motion we approve the replat of the located west of 135 highway, north of 69th Street, air cap delivery warehouse addition.
Okay, Jim?
I second that.
And John, did you have any additional comments?
I second, thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes eight and zero. The next item on the agenda is item F, which is consider a special use permit to establish 130-foot monopole communications tower in the L1 light industrial district. Jack?
Just second, Mr. Mayor. I can't seem to get the screen to move. I have an exhibit to show you. Could you run back and tell the gentleman that's in the booth there, I need his assistance? It helps when you have a drawing in front of you. All right. On your screen, you'll see a blue and red screen. The red is where the cell tower will be located, the blue is access to that site. To your left, you'll see Broadway. To the right, you'll see a portion of Wichita Valley Center Flood Control. And if you gazed off farther to the right, you'll see Goodyear. So it kind of orient you there a little bit. This is the old Fremar site, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with that or not. And you just have a bunch of green trucks and stuff parked there. It's a Fremar site. Just about 100 yards to the north, which is straight up, there's another cell tower that's already on that property. It's completely full of sawyer stuff, and so they have to build another tower. The planning commission has been insisting that we use monopole instead of the old lattice structure type things and the ones that will have to, you have to have Godwars and stuff like that. The only criteria that the planning commission placed on this is that they get approval from the FAA, that this will, this is going to be like 160 foot, that it will not cause any conflict with air traffic. And they have to get approval from the FAA in writing that building a cell tower will not cause any conflict with that. And also, they have to have at least a million dollars liability insurance in case the thing falls over, crushes something because of wind or whatever. To the east, obviously, is the Valley Center Flood Control. To the north is their property, and to the south is some of their property, and all that property in that area is light industrial. Across the street is FMI, which is light industrial. So this other cell tower's been there for years and years and years, and so the planning commission, in looking at it and going over the 17 factors, did not find anything within their review that would cause them concern about the cell tower, other than the height and liability insurance, obviously. So that's kind of my report, Mr. Mayor. I'd be able to answer any more questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Jack? Gary?
Make a motion to approve the special use permit for the established 130-foot monopole communications tower in L1 light industrial district.
Okay. Melvin?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Dana, would you call the roll?
John Lanier?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Randy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that motion passes eight zero for that special use permit. That will bring us to item G, which is consider the purchase of a current model Skid steer loader. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are requesting council's consideration on the purchase of a new Skid steer loader. This would be a replacement for one that we have now. Existing one that we have now is a Model 2000 with 2,500 hours on this, so it's 17 years We've checked on getting prices from four vendors. Part of our specifications on this included 61 horsepower diesel motor, which is equivalent to the same size that we have now. We did specify cab with heat and air. That's got to help the operators not have to deal with the dust and the winter, the elements in the winter, the dust in the summer. Did also include high-flow. Did also include high-flow hydraulics, seven and fourteen-pin electrical control panels, so that we can run different attachments on this. This is a piece of equipment has various uses that we use it for. For example, after the new administration center had got put in, the landscape was put in, there had to be a fiber optics cable that was put in, that got disturbed, so we used the loader that we, or the skid steer that we have to, to get that back to finished grade. We did utilize the skid steer with the berm that we have on the south side of the administration center. When the disc golf course went in, we punched holes because we had that attachment on there. Did include a smooth bucket, four-in-one bucket, a blade so that we can use here at the new city administration center for, to deal with the snow and ice. We also got, specked out rubber snowplow cutting edges to be used on uneven surfaces, so that we don't damage any facilities or the equipment itself. We'd like to trade this in. The pieces of attachments that we would like to trade with this include our current Bobcat, the backhoe attachment, uh, the four-in-one bucket, and the smooth bucket as well. We did send out for four bids on this and received two bids back. The two bids that we received back, one from White Star, the total on that was forty-three thousand, twenty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. They would give us nine thousand in trade for the Bobcat and the attachments. Murphy submitted forty-seven, four twenty-eight, sixty-six, and would do ten thousand on our existing piece of equipment. The, the lowest of the two is thirty-four thousand, twenty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. There's a difference of three thousand, four hundred and one dollars on that. We would recommend to council that we accept the bid from White Star.
Alvin?
You say you're trading the equipment in the box blade and different stuff. Are you getting that on the new one?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I make a motion we approve, uh, to purchase the new skid steer for thirty-four thousand, twenty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents from White Star from the special highway and street fund.
Okay, George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight and zero. That brings us to item H, which is consider the purchase of a current model three-quarter ton, single cab pickup. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, requesting council's consideration on the purchase of a three-quarter ton, uh, truck. This, uh, again, is a replacement, uh, vehicle. The one that we have now is currently assigned to, uh, Alan, our street supervisor. We have followed the guidelines that, uh, over the last several years, that council has developed for us on the purchase of a vehicle. This is a three-quarter ton truck, which is what we have now. One variation that we do have is, uh, did put a tow package on this. Uh, also a four-wheel drive with a plow prep package, because we will use this to, uh, push snow with. We did specify a high amp alternator. We've kinda learned the hard way that, uh, if you don't do that, we're blowing fuses, so we thought that'd be prudent to do that. We also have, currently, we have all of our vehicles undercoated, and, uh, we did specify LinX bed liner. Forgot to mention, the existing truck that Street Supervisor's currently driving is a oh-four, thirteen years old, with a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred miles on it. We, uh, submitted these bids out to, uh, six dealerships, Lubers, Donovan, Hamilton, Eck, Hatton, and Davis Moore. We received three back, of which Davis Moore, it handles the Ram twenty-five hundred, was the lowest price on it. They were offering, uh, one thousand five hundred in trade in. The lowest, uh, price, taking everything into account, is from Davis Moore, for twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and we would recommend council consider that.
Okay, Tom?
I've got one question, and I know at one time the streets would have, department would have preferred to have a flatbed or something that they could go over the sides with. Uh, has that changed? So that they wanna pick up?
We just got a new flatbeds, and that's working out well for us, actually.
Okay, well, and I didn't know if that was a requirement, 'cause I know the last time we bought a pickup bed, and the comments after we got it was, we really would have rather had a flatbed, so they've worked that out?
This is the one that Alan prefers.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just didn't wanna buy the right thing, or wrong thing?
I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, Jim?
I noticed we're trading in the old pickup along with the old, old snowplow, but we're not buying a snowplow yet tonight, so that'll be a follow-up item, probably.
We will have to include that. We didn't have time. We had a number of items on this agenda. So, we will have to include that.
Okay. Ken, John?
Um, I just, a couple for clarification. I know it says on here add item, um, add alternate, extended cab, so it will be extended cab, correct?
It will not be extended cab. We asked Alan if he wanted that. At some point, we do plan on getting a plow on that. But with the plow, that's gonna, the length is too much, so he preferred not to have the extended cab, so this does not include that.
Okay. And, and the other comment I have, not necessarily on this, but I just wonder, like, on trade-in, and, and forgive me, 'cause I, I don't know what the truck looks like that we're trading in, but I just wonder, is there a reason that we don't, like, for instance, this truck, instead of trading it in for fifteen hundred, we try to sell it on, on, uh, Purple Wave? I mean, would it bring a little more money?
I don't know. I don't know what, what the market would be for that truck. It is thirteen years old with a hundred and ninety thousand. I don't know that we would do better than, than that amount for trade-in.
Okay, thank you. Just something to think about, I guess.
Sure.
I guess it depends if it's got the floorboard or not.
Add alternate?
Melvin?
Well, no, on Purple Wave, I think the chief ran into that as bigger hassle than it was, what you make difference in, in what you make off, uh, you know, the straightened end versus selling it on Purple Wave. I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars from Davis Moore to purchase the truck from the street and highway fund.
Ken? George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes eight and zero. The next item on the agenda, item I, which is consider the replacement of sixteen fire hydrants. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The little dots on the screen are the fire hydrants that are being replaced. It's kinda hard to see, but the little red things on the, on that drawing is, and all the little dots are, are all the fire hydrants we're replacing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have identified sixteen fire hydrants that need to be replaced. Most of these are Mueller brand hydrants. Most of them dated in the fifties. As Jack has indicated, the location of these, these primarily Park City Edition, Four Seas, Owens, Zonkers, Sunny Slope. Most of these hydrants are, would make them about sixty years old. We specked out, for a number of years now, we've been specking out the same hydrant as far as brand and style. That helps us. We like this brand. We like the construction of it. It helps us minimize stocking a whole host of different brand hydrants, that we don't have to stock all the replacement parts for that. It's called a cloud, uh, Gold Medallion Hydrant. Three-way hydrants, the stores adapters, which is, uh, fire department regs now, all of them red. Have made a specification to our contractor to notify our residents that are gonna be out. Our plan now is to do these in groups of anywhere from four, five, or six at a time. To shut an area off, what we do is have the areas prepped, that is dug out as far as we can go with it. At the time we turn the water on, what would be required is to cut that, install a new hydrant, so that we're minimizing the downtime to our residents. We would anticipate that this project may start in several weeks, and maybe a duration of about three to four weeks in time. We sent bids to, uh, five contractors and received bids back from dueling, No Walk, and McCullough. The, uh, had two bids that were very competitive. With a project this size and to have a difference of two, two hundred dollars on that is very competitive. We, uh, all three are actually good, good contractors. Based on the lowest price of these, we would recommend to consider dueling construction for seventy-nine thousand, two hundred dollars.
Okay, John?
I'll make a motion we approve, uh, the replacement of sixteen fire hydrants, at a cost of seventy-nine thousand, not to exceed seventy-nine thousand, two hundred, to dueling construction, and this will be paid out of the, uh, twenty-seventeen budget's utility operating reserve fund. I was very impressed to see the bids on this, how close they were, uh, from the two companies. Let's see here, two hundred and forty dollars difference.
Yes, sir.
On a nearly eighty thousand dollar project, so that tells you it's very competitive, so, thank you.
It is.
All right, Tom, did you want a second for discussion?
I'll second the discussion.
Okay, sure, yeah. Did you have anything?
And I got a question, are
Sure.
What, are they actually gonna put a new fire hydrant assembly in, including a new valve?
Not a valve. We don't have a new construction now. It's pretty typical to put a hydrant valve that's normally located several
So that you can shut the hydrant off separate of the line, correct?
Right. In a lot of cases, there's no room for that. Most of these hydrants are six feet back a curb, and there's no room for that. We didn't include that on that. That would bump these costs up quite a bit.
Okay, so they're just gonna remove the existing fire hydrant at the hub and install a new one where the
Yes, connected at the main. That's correct. The entire installation will be new, from the main on up.
Okay, and these will be fire hydrants with the connection already built on, not adapters added?
Right.
'Cause I know there's been a couple contractors locally trying to sell the old fire hydrant and put a storage connection on it.
No, no. This will come factory.
Okay.
With the storage fittings.
Okay.
Yeah, Randy?
Just from my knowledge, 'cause I'm dumb to the fire hydrant thing, how do we determine, um, what fire hydrants are replaced?
These are inoperable. Most, most of the time, it's because of the stem, it breaks. It's pretty typical that the majority of the lines in these areas are four-inch line, a four-inch line, the assemblies will break more readily than a bigger size, so it's not unusual for that to happen. But most of the time, it's, these are inoperable. It's usually a valve or the stem that breaks on those.
Do we know how long they've been inoperable?
This is a result of us checking them out this year.
And then, um, where it talks about the four-inch and six-inch shoe, what's, what's a shoe?
It's the bottom of the hydrant, the part that connects on to the main.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, Tom?
Well, I was gonna ask, I knew you said we exercise, and fire department goes around and is exercising them too, don't they? Or are they not doing ours?
They, they do the hydrants, yes. We do hydrants and valves.
Okay.
We do both.
Okay, but I, and I didn't know, but they're going through, and they're telling you when they have one, it doesn't work.
Well, this is in conjunction with the fire department, yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have two lists out there, okay?
It's not duplicated.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I'm not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight and zero. That brings us to item J, which is consider a workshop for the strategic planning and ten-year comprehensive plan. Tom?
That's something I brought up about a month ago, and we decided at tonight's meeting, we would, uh, set some dates. Talking to the mayor tonight, there's a couple people that haven't turned their lists in yet. So we're gonna defer this till the first week in December, and we'll set a date then, once those have been turned in, and Jack can compile all the data. Uh, at that same night, we might do the planning session date, and then also maybe set up a pay date, so we can look at, uh, what we wanna do for pay raises next year. So maybe set two different meetings up that night.
Yeah, but those will be different, different items.
They'll be different times, but I'm just saying we do both, set two meetings up that night, so.
So we'll just, uh, punt this to our next meeting. And then we'll, we'll just see if we can, uh, work out and hash out some dates.
But the delay is to get everybody's list in, so that we have a list compiled, and we don't have to make one when we get there that night. So if you've got some ideas, send them. Email me, Jack.
All right, thanks, Tom. That'll bring us to item K, which is consider counseling the December twenty-sixth meeting. So just looking ahead, a couple of the times we've done this in the past, where, um, council meeting is actually falling on Christmas, and we've just skipped that last meeting. Uh, this is the twenty-sixth, um, so I just wanna see if the council wanted to go ahead and skip this meeting. And just kinda do what we've done in years past. Tom?
I would make a motion that we, uh, cancel the December twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, make that motion assuming if something came up and we had to have a meeting, we could reschedule it. Just to have a meeting, I don't think we'd do that, so I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes eight and zero. The next item on the agenda, item L, was consider trading Bear Hill HOA, their lot forty-six, block five, for city lot five, block four, in Bear Hill Estates. So, yesterday I received two phone calls, one from our realtor and one from the HOA. There is a buyer interested in purchasing There is a buyer interested in purchasing lot forty-six and the one next to it. They want both lots, so that they can put their house on there and build it. As you know, we, we, we deeded that property to the HOA. Now, the HOA, that was kind of their last option, because they want this, but they didn't like the idea that it was so far back in Bear Hill, and they didn't like the idea that it was close to the interstate. So we have another lot that's available, that's centralized, centrally located. So what both, and, and we have to remember, we have exposure on specials on all of these lots. We could dump all of these if we do the same deal with Bear Hill on the lot five, block four, that we did for them on lot six and block, block five. They're going to deed back lot forty-six back to the city. We would then sell it to the end of it, to the interested buyer that's interested in both lots next to each other. So basically, we would undo what we did and then do it again on lot five for the Bear Hill HOA, and then sell the other two lots. So I'm looking for, if the council supports this, I think the HOA still needs to go back and have discussion about doing this, because their, their board met last night, their board wants to do this, but they still need to go back to the HOA and get a vote. So it's here tonight to see if the council is interested in trading lots with the HOA, so that we can sell those two lots. Gary?
I'll make a motion, we consider trading Bear Hill HOA, lot forty-six, block five, for city lot five, block four, Bear Hill Estates.
And just one thing I want to add, that we would keep the same conditions that we had originally with lot forty-six, which would be if, for some reason, the HOA did not pay their specials, that that property reverted back to us.
With the same conditions.
Okay. Is there a second? Tom?
I'll second it. I have a question. In light of doing this, will the HOA be having a special meeting to discuss this, so that we could bring this back at the beginning December meeting? Or our meeting later this month?
I, I think, yes, the HOA is basically looking to see if we're interested in it before they pursue it anymore. The board is interested in it. They just need to go back to their HOA and see if.
The reason I'm asking is I don't know how often that board meets, but I know some other HOAs meet quarterly, so I didn't want to wait three months to find out.
No, they, they're considering putting together a special meeting.
Okay.
To take care of this. So it's kind of, it kind of works out good for us. HOA kind of gets a lot more ideal to what they want it, and then we sell two lots and then we're done with Bear Hill.
I just didn't want the people that are interested in buying both lots to go somewhere else, because we didn't do it in a timely manner.
And that's why it's here tonight, and so we can keep these buyers that are interested and get these two lots sold.
Okay.
Yeah. So Gary, you made a motion. I'll second it. Tom, second. I'm not seeing any further discussion, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
And that motion passes seven, zero, one. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, which was added on, which was consider a donation from Hartman Arena. Jack was contacted this afternoon by Hartman Arena. They have their turf, their indoor turf field from when they played soccer out there. My understanding is it's kind of in their way. They're curious if we would be interested in taking that. So I contacted John earlier about it, because I know he's, knows Scott Mark real well. One of the things we've talked about in the past is, could any, could we do anything to turf the infield, or how could we use this? So John, I'll let you speak to what Scott may have said.
They're interested in it, and, you know, he, I mean, part of the problem with the tournaments and stuff they hold here is rain out of course, and the drainage in our, our fields is, I mean, it was designed a long time ago, and they weren't necessarily set up to hold more and more fields than they have. So he is interested in it. The thing to consider, though, is we need a place to put it. It, it takes up quite a bit of room, and it, it can, obviously mice and things like that can ruin it or damage it, so it's not something you want to just set out and park them off somewhere. You want to have small ones to put it, that's going to be protected in time to damage it. And they may not have that, but he's interested in using it, maybe he's not able to do it, maybe he would be interested in buying it for the other folks who have down there.
And I think, Jack, you, you kind of took from your call with Hartman to the rate, that if we sold it, they would be okay with that, they wouldn't be upset if.
Yeah, they're kind of desperate to get it moved out, and they, we thought that he'd like to operate us first, or anybody else.
And I, I think we have a lot of questions, too. One, just, I mean, I don't know, can an indoor turf be used on the outside?
And, and that's what part of his comment was, was to turf a field or turf a baseball field, half the cost is obviously the material, which is very expensive, and the lifespan of it. But obviously, this lot, this has been indoors, has been rained on, hasn't had the sun beating it up, the UV rays, so it's probably in pretty good shape, is kind of how he felt. So, I mean, there's some hidden things in it, but the way he acted when I, when I kind of brought it up to him was, it would, would be a good idea to accept it if it's a gift and it's free. And obviously, if we can't use it, then, I mean, there's probably people that would use small patches of it, you know, for here and there, or whatever, but he thought it could be, there's some potential there, good use for it.
So I guess what we're kind of looking for is, the council wants us to explore this and possibly accept this offer. Worst-case scenario is we get stuck with it and find out we can't use it, and we have to figure out a way to get rid of it.
Purple Wave.
Yeah.
You know what? You say that, but it's, if you look on Craigslist, when they're tearing up football fields all over, they're using old, worn-out turf and they're selling it in football, football fields, so people come and get it, and it's not cheap. I, I, I guess I feel like we'd be making a big mistake if we didn't, so I'll make a motion that we accept this.
Okay, Tom, did you want a second?
I was just going to say, I don't know that there'd be a problem getting rid of it, so.
Yeah. I don't know, I think if we, we can turn around and turf an infield somewhere, and, you know, the batting cages John brought up, they're just concrete based in there. At least we know we could cut sections out and get the batting cages turfed, if that was a desire.
Right. Or we found a nice way to do, like, around the playground area or something, I don't know.
Okay.
We'll figure it out once we get it.
And a big thing is storage, so we'll have to figure out how much space it's taken up and what we can do, and maybe even reach out to Lou and see if he could help us with anything, if we needed to find a spot big enough to stick it. Well, there's, this is just open for discussion, we're trying to figure out where we might put it.
Because it has rubber pellets in it, is what it, but when you take the rubber pellets, it's really lightweight. It's the rubber pellets that go inside the turf that makes it so heavy.
Okay.
So, once they can comb that or rake all that stuff out, it's, it's not bad, but.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. Next item on the agenda is just governing body reports, remarks. I just want to say I spoke to D Sturt today about the disc golf tournament coming up. They have ten spots available. That's all that's left, so very encouraging. The activity that I think we continue to see in the park with the disc golf has been pretty impressive, and these tournaments have been pretty good, but they had a hundred open slots, ninety of those are already taken, they have ten, ten spots left. I think that's pretty encouraging to see that, that type of activity in there. Jim?
Uh, just to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week, so nothing else to add.
Yeah, Brandy?
I just want to let everybody know, whoever wants to come out on Friday, December eighth, from seven to eight AM, the newly elected council member of Ward Three, Ben Sosetta, and myself, we're going to try to get constituents to come out today, like donuts for coffee conversation, to get to know us. We can get to know you and hear kind of what some of your thoughts and ideas that you'd like to see happen in Park City. So if anyone would like to join us on Friday's, December eighth, at seven to eight AM, we'd like to have you come out there.
All right, thank you. George?
Oh, my big name.
Tom?
I've got one thing. I was notified last week, FMI is in the process of selling. Company out of Florida called AEI Aerospace is buying them. They're, one of the partners in that company is a former president of Hawker Beach Craft, so we've got new things coming, and I don't know whether Rick Nutt and family are going to be involved in that company still, or, or not. I assume they'll be there for some transition time, but it's kind of an interesting.
Jack, you want to, you want to tag on that?
Well, I have another business. He heard that Rick Nutt had one of our flags, so he wants one, so he can fly it from his business. So maybe we've got something catching on here.
Actually, there's been a couple. Melvin brought up another one today, too. Is that it, Tom? Melvin?
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything? George?
Yeah, I'd also like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We definitely have a lot to be thankful for this year, so I'd like to give God thanks for that. Thank you.
John?
I was just going to say that Dan got us together today for the website or technology committee, so we're back in progress on that. We kind of got slowed down with the move and all the events going on, so we're back on that, and hopefully, in the fairly near future, maybe after the first of the year, we'll have something we can bring to the council.
Okay.
And that's it, so I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Jim? Okay. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero.